I am calling this main meeting of the AMC's board of trustees to order at 6:40. So, we do have four, we had a number of last-minute emergencies in the past, but we have a number of people calling into executive session. There is going to be one change to the agenda, which is that we will not be going into second discussion session to discuss pending litigation. Executive session will only be to discuss strategies and collective bargaining because open session would have a detrimental effect on the process.
We have Easter, so we're not too late.
I can say "oh." We still have a two-hour agenda at an open meeting. The main topics that we're going to cover in open meeting, other than the monthly updates, we do, we will be reviewing family survey results. Ms. Jessica Hennessy, who's president of the special education parent advisory committee, will be presenting and have a discussion, and we will also have the ed committee year-long update and recommendations from their work this year. So those will be the substantive pieces of the open agenda. So Rick, you, thank you for agreeing to be tight keeper, and just ask me to keep us on track, that'll be great. And there is no finance committee update this month because we had a substantive one last month, but you should have the full financial committee here, so if you have any questions, you can contact Tom afterwards. Okay, with that, we'll take a look at the minutes. Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, did not, I would like to make note of the meeting's key video tapes. The minutes are in your packet, and then we're circulating by Sarah last night.
September was, September was the role of flag, I guess.
Would you make me press?
The role of flag, I guess.
Yep. If there are no other comments, I would entertain the motion to approve these without change. All in favor? Okay, motion passed, two minutes. All right, there was no public comment, so we'll move directly to the faculty rep update.
I have been working with Tom and Rick to help prepare them for recent pending arrival of either high school or college, because they've been in the quarter recently transitioned. I think that faculty sort of feeling about this time are concerned about sort of as we start parenting plans for next year, and I think one of the things that is sort of on a lot of people's minds is the hiring process. Of course, we're not talking to personnel decisions, but in the past, the faculty has been considerable, has had considerable role in helping with the process mutually. We've had a process where faculty members were invited to model lessons, invited to give feedback. Some faculty, I feel, would like to step back from faculty engagement in the hiring process, and that is, they don't like that. So they like being part of the process of doing that. I think also as we've seen, the notices of openings are posted, there's some concern among faculty that full-time positions are being replaced with half-time or part-time positions, which might lead to, or concerns that it might lead to faculty classes, class size increasing, or teaching loads increasing. We're not really sort of sure what the reason is why a full-time position would not need to be replaced with another full-time position. So there's some, there's some sort of concern around that. People are starting to get classroom, you know, their teaching loads for next year, and concern about, just some, it seems like there's some changes, more teachers teaching, how do I word this? That in the past, for instance, maybe there would only be one or two teachers that taught sixth grade English, for example, and now it seems like there might be more teachers teaching sixth grade English, so it might be harder to afford these schedules and things like that, rather than just one person teaching the same sort of thing all day. So again, these things will sort of flesh out over time, and you know, we're just sort of in the process of starting this, but those are sort of some of the concerns. On the plus side, Mike's not here, but I'll toss in some plus sides. The end of the year is coming, it's been a very, very busy few weeks with field trips are out this week, it's very quiet around the school, it feels like no one's here, the seniors have left us. Quite noiseily, they have left us, and quite quietly, they leave us. And so that's nice to have the kids on field trips. I keep getting pictures back from those history teachers who are in Washington DC with the sophomores right now, looks like they're having a good time. Sixth grade was out this week, the eleventh grade is out tomorrow in Boston, I think the eighth grade is out this week as well on a field trip, so I know a lot of people have been asking for field trips, so it's nice to see them, and nice to sort of, it's always nice at the end of the year to look back and say goodbye to our seniors, have a nice senior breakfast, and things like that, so that was nice.
Thank you, I'll go ahead.
Actually, just checking along to what Jessica was saying, I think that there is also concern on the parent's side about class sizes for next year, and what that is going to look like, so that is something that I've heard from a handful of parents. I will say in general, I think that end-of-the-year fatigue has set in, so there's not a lot else going on. I think, to Jessica's point, if there's a lot going on within the school with activities and field trips and all that, so I think that in graduation coming up, so I think that people are busy with all of those types of things, and there is definitely not, not a lot else to report at this point.
I would say the teachers are not feeling fatigue at all, we could go at least another four times. Thanks, Josh. How are you hearing concerns about class sizes? Who is raising?
Just in general, it's parent, it's from parents that are concerned about the size of their classes based on what their students have this year and...
Based on this year?
Yeah, based on this year, and what it's going to look like for next year, so is the, you know, is it going to improve, are the class sizes going down, or are they going to go up? I mean, just in general, what, in what area is it going to trend?
Thank you. Is there any other questions, then we'll move on to the executive director's update.
So, first thing on my list here is the MCAS testing. I wanted to report that we finished the MCAS for English language, and also the MCAS for math. This is, of course, the high stakes test for the 10th grade, because it's required for graduation in Massachusetts, so everybody has taken that in the 10th grade for both English and math. We've had a few retakes for some folks in other grades besides 10, that they're being, they're either, I think, for the most part, finished at this point. So that's a good thing, to get everybody tested on time, or for the most part. Coming up is the last MCAS test for the year, which is the biology MCAS, which is given to our ninth graders, so that's going to be administered in the first two days of June. So it's been going well, I think there's been a lot of cooperation and help between the various teachers and the administrators and the folks that are looking to make that happen. It's rather, it's a lot of work and planning, and rather, can be rather complex to do, especially considering that we have some challenges space-wise here, so it's particularly challenging to jigsaw puzzle, and we have to figure out, I think the people that are doing this have done a great job.
Is there anything more to the PARC test?
PARC, it's an interesting development this year. There was a decision made by the state board of education to go to a sort of a hybrid, they call it MCAS 2.0, where they're going to incorporate some of the elements of the PARC test with the MCAS that served the state so well for the last, I don't know, 15, 20 years. So that was something that was a little bit of a departure from the direction that they were going in up to this year, but I think it's reflective of the fact that there's a new secretary of education, there's also new board members of the state board of education. And there was a feeling that the MCAS has done such good service to the students in the state, that it should be incorporated with the PARC. As you probably know, there's kind of an ongoing national debate about the PARC and the MCAS. I think the new administration, particularly the new secretary of education thinks that the MCAS has done a great deal of good for the students, and they want to make sure we didn't lose the benefits from that. I think it's an ongoing discussion. So there were some components in the MCAS that included parts of the PARC, and that's supposed to develop over the next three or four years. New hires, we had mentioned that we were, we've been working to bring on a full-time human resources manager, and that person will be starting next week, we'll introduce her to the faculty, the regular staff, maybe show them an opportunity to start getting to know people. We're working on that for a while, we'll give the faculty an update on the progress on that for the last staff meeting. Also, in response to some of the concerns that the administration noticed this year, and also that were brought up by particularly some of the middle school teachers, we're looking, interviewing for a middle school dean of students, to have someone who would focus on the middle school in addition to having new students for the high school, we think that will help with a lot of promotion of particularly the life of the students outside the classroom, so what goes on in the hallways, lunch, dismissal, arrival, all the sort of things that build, that really builds the culture of the school, to try to develop the student talent, and also provide opportunities for inclusion. We have some internal candidates, some external candidates for that, so we're really good at that right now. An update on the regional bus registration, there's been a trend in the last several years to consolidate some of the regional buses for the school, and this is because as time has gone on, there's been a general decrease in the number of students that come to the school from the farther-flung towns, and an increase in the number of students coming from Marlboro and the surrounding core towns, Mainard, Hudson. We noticed this in the past, last year, last summer specifically, there were some combinations and eliminations of some buses because of the significant decrease in ridership. So for example, there was at one time a bus that was serving towns farther to the east and southeast, as far as Newton and Welsley, Framingham, Beatty. Those, the number of students on those buses has declined, declined to the point where that bus was no longer supportable. And then this year, we've noticed that the ridership on the bus that's serving the northern towns, Westford, Billington, Mainard, Stowe, Hudson, has increased, and the number of students on the buses coming from the west has actually gone down, the trend has been going down for the last few years. And at this point, we're still trying to have that bus, but we've notified the parents that the cost will go up quite a bit because of the fact that there are fewer riders. We're trying to schedule that, we've gotten feedback from the parents who are interested in riding the buses to the west, riding the bus from the west, but at this point, it's appreciably lower than what it was last year. So it seems like the trend continues to consolidate, so that there are more riders closer into the, more people coming to the school from closer in, and fewer people coming from farther out.
Dr. McCleary, I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity for those parents who are going to incur an increase in cost, if they wanted to do their own sort of separate fundraising to subsidize the bus cost? I seem to remember, I thought we did something like that some years ago, where we gave the parents the opportunity to offset the cost, if they were able to do their creation.
I know that last year, when the parents who were being served by the buses to the east, Newton and Beatty in that area, when they found out that the cost was going to go up because of the very small ridership, they got together with other parents and arranged for a transportation that would help them. So I do know people do that in response to the, the increased cost.
But there would be that opportunity for those parents, but there's been an effort to reach out to parents that will sign up this year that didn't sign up for next year?
Yeah, well, the request was sent out, I believe, toward the, last week of April, and it was sent out to everybody that was involved in the past, and then they had a number of weeks to come back, and we sent reminders to them.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, they'd have to be notified, given a date, because you know, you need to have a plan by a certain date, otherwise the cost will be...
Yeah, that's true.
Well, we'd have to give the us company notification by a office person.
Yeah, for planning, it's helpful to have, have the information filled here rather than later.
So, you know, this trend is not a, is not a good trend, I mean, there, you know, there's a lot of different moving parts, to be sure. The school can't sustain, you know, regional bus service without having subscribers, but when the price goes up, then there are fewer subscribers. You know, I realize that, you know, in a, in a legal, technical sense, it's not the school's responsibility, or the board's responsibility to sit there and provide transportation, but, you know, on some level, there is, you know, we do bear some burden there for helping families get their kids to school. Once we've accepted them into the school, I think there's, there's things that we need to do, and rather than, you know, it's all, it's all fine and good for us to sort of sit there and say, okay, we've given you the opportunity to sign up for buses, you weren't able to sign up for buses, or some of you did, others did not, and if you want to stay, you know, continue to have bus service, then we're going to, it's going to cost half again, or twice as much, or whatever. And then just sort of, you can say, okay, it's, you know, the ball's in your court. Again, I understand from a rules perspective, that's what we can do, I just wonder if, if we shouldn't be looking at, you know, ways of continuing to support the need to get kids to school through encouraging car pools? I know I've had parents over time talk to me about, it's very difficult to set up car pools, because you can't find out, you know, who needs a car pool, you know, who lives in a particular area, and things like that. So, you know, I guess I'd just say, I, I understand why we're discussing it the way that we're discussing it, in sort of very neat, logical terms of, we sent this out, here's the responses we got back, the ridership has gone down, the prices are going up, I understand. There's a part of me, though, that says, I think maybe I look at other things that we might be able to do, rather than just throwing all the burden on the parents, to individually try to figure out how to get their kids to school.
Do you distinguish between core towns and non-core towns in that? Do you think we have a different responsibility for core town families than we do for non-core town?
Okay, so our charter, you know, as I've said before, our charter says that we support four core towns, okay? So count that three, because Marlboro gets automatic bus service. So we, you know, to some extent, we do bear responsibility for making sure that kids from all four core towns can get to school in a reasonable way. I think, however, that we also bear some responsibility, once we take a kid in, of doing what we can, I'm not saying we, we have to take every measure, I'm not saying we take on the responsibility fully ourselves, but I think we do have, once a kid is going here, we do have some responsibility to try to work collaboratively with parents to figure out what solutions are. It's stressful for parents, for families, for the students, you know, you know, some, you know, there's a kid on, you know, so our bus comes in through Mainard, there's a kid who comes from North and Dover, down to Westford to pick up the bus there, and ride all the way from Westford through Mainard in order to get to school here. That's pretty heroic, and they're willing, you know, she's willing to pay the, the cost of doing that, but...
You know, I often see people posting on the face, the AMC Facebook page, is anybody commute from X town, is there anybody just having some kind of AMC Central sponsored online way to help?
Like, is there an app for that?
There must be, they're to facilitate, just so that we can say, hey, AMC families, here's, during this week, there is a facility, I don't know how this works.
The issue is going to, I mean, Dr. McCleary is as I said, this issue is going to continue to, you know, to get worse, particularly west, as fewer and fewer kids are coming from that, as fewer kids use the bus, as those kids who, who, who are coming from that, of course, are getting older and older now, because they've been in the system for a while, so now they can drive, they have other options, and so forth. So, again, I don't want to, we can't solve that problem right here, I'm just, I'm just offering that, that I think that we need to take some steps as a board, as a school, to try to figure out ways to get kids to the school, and not just put the burden, the board shouldn't be just putting the burden simply on the parent's shoulders.
It's likely we're looking at how some other charter schools that really serve a broad region do this, I mean, college, and, or certain, the region.
Yeah.
How would you do that?
Yeah, we probably ought to have a task force that looks at, you know, issues having to do with sort of regional, you know...
You're going to jump in, I guess. So, well, I mean, seven years ago, when my old experience started, there was a bulletin board, it was sent out, this was before I was in sixth grade, there was an AMC bulletin board set up for people to pass specifically for carpooling. So that did exist at one point.
I think there's, I think that's a good idea, I think there are other great ideas that I'd like us as a board to, to, to look at, at those things over the long term.
So is that logically fit in any particular committee?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, if we had a task force that was looking at regional shifts, that probably would be a good...
So give, give answers to that.
Let me, let me give some thought to that, give me another five minutes.
Just as a time check, we've got about one minute left, of course, it's been a long meeting, you're up.
All right, well, is there anything else on?
So the family, family school relationships...
And this is just going to roll over into the, to Rick and with your comment of what you're thinking.
So this was put together with the help of board members, with Saul and Mr. Cal, and Panorama, the survey, professional survey organization that the school has retained to do the surveys, and the responses came in over a period of several weeks, we got a 46% response rate...
Oh, that's in fact, you said it was a pretty good one.
Which is a very good response rate, and told by the people, the professional people at Panorama. And as you can see, there's a summary here, the various categories in which the questions were asked, family engagement, family support, grit, which is another, perhaps a more trendy word for perseverance, or for to stay with the task, learning behaviors, school climate, school fit, and school safety there at the bottom. And then the big numbers include tell how many favorable responses there were, but again, these, each one of these topics contains a number of questions that get at the big topic, the family engagement, family support, or whatever, from different angles. And the way that the survey questions are put together is based on how they can approach these various categories, and get a well-rounded sort of understanding of the relationships between the family and the school. There's the family engagement, as you can see, 16% favorable response in terms of how much families are engaged with, questions that fall under that, if you want to see them, you can just click on that, I believe, on family engagement there on this line. So this, this graph here tells you where the responses fell in terms of Panorama's other schools that they've sampled on a national level. I'm sorry, he probably scrolled a lot of games. So that's what that green mountain is there with the red line going through, so that tells you that based on the other, other schools that were surveyed by this organization on this topic, that, where we fall in terms of how much family engagement there is, which is, I guess, is helpful, so it gives you a different perspective on, on the answers.
So it looks like it's possible, but not statistically unusual?
Yeah, it's on the low, 30% on it.
30%.
30% on it.
Well, so I, you know, so I'd like to understand a little bit about what it means by favorable responses, because I know when I looked at the questions, they were often, you know, out of the five responses that you had, there were four that were positive, and only one that was negative. And so, you know, if we're sitting here saying, on a Likert scale of five responses, we're going to count the top four as being favorable, and only the bottom one as being unfavorable, then, you know, that, that is very different than sitting here saying that the middle one is neutral, and two are negative, and two are positive.
So Rick, do you remember the answer to this, because it seems like...
It's very similar to a question that came up, because I actually asked Panorama that question, the, the response was that they want to err on the side of being sure that it's favorable, because, for example, when, when we had the...
The top two.
Right, the top two. If you go down, oh, well, probably not there, but if you, you know, the, the answers, as Ken pointed out, range from, you know, little engagement, somewhat engaged, you know, almost no engagement, a great deal of engagement, and so they count only the things that are absolutely definitively positive. If it's in the middle, if it's like somewhat engaged, they'll count that as negative. And I asked them about this, and they said, this is based on their experience doing surveys, that you get the best results by doing it that way. So I have to defer to their expertise in this, if they really want to do the surveys. But it came up, for example, and again, this, this is an interesting question for me personally, because it came up when there were questions on a mid-year check-in survey, where I had said, you know, is the school leader, you know, doing something, say X or Y, and you could say, well, somewhat, and that was counted as negative. So I, of course, asked them, I said, well, somewhat, so maybe, wouldn't that, why would that be negative? They said, no, no, we err on the side of, has to be very much, or, you know, so again, I think that's the decision they made, based on their experience.
So if we acknowledge that Panorama has more experience doing school surveys... So if we acknowledge that Panorama has more experience doing school surveys, so let's throw that on four. What I'm saying is when you have five responses and four are positive and one is negative, and when, you know, you know, that, that skews to me the responses, okay? I'm concerned. I'm not saying that they're wrong, I'm just saying it's worthy of exploration.
And just a left, it's not, it's not one to four. It's top two box, or if you get two, the top two comprise positive response.
That's right.
The bottom three, the middle and the bottom two are not necessarily positive, doesn't say negative, but if they're not positive, so it's, and which is pretty conventional, top two boxes is considered positive in Likert analysis. So, so as an example, in the first question, how often do you meet a person with teachers at your school, which is the underlying question, the first, or the first underlying question?
Yeah.
Yeah. It was two percent responded favorably, and that's because the top response is weekly or more, and only one percent said that. Monthly, and only one percent of the population responded there. And then the rest of the population either responded every few months, seven percent, once or twice per year, forty-five percent, and almost never, forty-seven percent.
Okay, so let's take a look at that. So, so the first one is weekly, the second one is what, monthly?
Monthly.
And then the third one is what?
Every few months. And every few months is not included.
Okay, right, right. So, so the fact that I meet with the teacher every few months is viewed as being not positive?
Yes.
Not being engaged?
Yes.
So that's what, that's their, so that's why, in fact, I'm not justifying, I'm just stating the facts, as Panorama reports them. So if you scroll up, I think if you, if you don't mind, but... Yeah, to that chart, that's why I think by the very nature of this question and this category, you tend to see this green cloud is way over to the left side. For better or worse, I don't, personally, I, you know, that's just the way they chose to write it.
Do we know if their benchmark is other middle and high schools or are they elementary schools?
I know, because I saw my elementary, my elementary school teachers, I saw much more frequent, I don't really care about that.
I don't, I, I'm not sure.
That's crazy.
I don't know if you know that offhand.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to ask them.
So I will just reiterate, at the risk of repeating, that I'm concerned about the way that they post the information here and what they determine as being favorable for other present day.
I think, to be very frank, in many of these categories, you need to look underneath to the underlying question and how the district did it to make a determination.
So...
I agree.
So do we have the response, do we have the responses for all, the, the number that were responded for each of the five?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, so, so in this report, actually, if you scroll down, I don't know if from the PDF version it is, but eventually, as we did last year, I think we're going to be posted, I, I was, oh, are we on the...
Yeah, this is, well, this one is posted for sure.
This is being posted. Can you be mind scrolling down? I don't know if this version has it, but if, in the online version...
The one that we got, I did not see it.
Yeah, there's no breakdown like that.
There's no breakdown.
Right.
It may be worthwhile, and maybe we can cut offline, if we can get a PDF version of that, so we can post it up rather than...
I think it's also worth noting that, just, just because we happened to pause on this question, the favorable also relates to, do parents want to see their teachers more? Like, they might be happy only seeing them once or twice or every few months. You know, are parents clamorant, why can't I? On the other hand, maybe parents like, I really wish I could see my kids' teachers more. I think that that is more of an issue.
Well, that's why they have other questions.
Right, yeah.
They have also, that's why it's a, it's a, just, you're trying to get at...
I understand it, but you know, really, if, if, if we were expecting parents to be engaged by meeting weekly with the teachers, is that really the expectation that in order to be engaged? I mean, I feel sort of engaged with my parent, with my children's education, I can tell you, I certainly don't meet weekly or monthly.
Yeah, so I would, I would say this, that I think when you look at the notion of favorability, you need to look at it and drill down. This is a model, and so they just like a model of top two box. It's such, as every model is, it's imperfect, it doesn't apply properly to everything.
I agree.
So, so I think we have to use discretion in terms of looking at it carefully.
So I would ask that when we send, when these reports are sent out in the future, that the raw data get sent out as well, because I look at this and I'm not able, I'm not able to interpret.
Well, we ask for this to be circulated as soon as possible, the survey task force is going to be looking at the next layer for the testing, because there's all the other responses that need to be analyzed as well.
Yes, a lot.
And so we can't send that out to everyone.
I think the point being is that by doing this, the Likert distribution, it's, Panorama appears to be making assumptions about what the appropriate number of contacts is.
Correct.
Yeah.
Every few weeks, good, every few months, not. So I do think that the positive negative distinction probably isn't very meaningful on this set of questions.
Well, we've seen that, we've seen that issue with previous versions of the survey where, you know, when we had the, what was the last one that we...
Faculty.
Yeah, faculty survey, you know, when we looked at the raw data and so forth, the raw data, in my opinion, was telling something very different, and in fact, more positive than what their analysis suggested.
Yeah, so I'll just throw this again, they're, they're using a model where they, and because it's a model, they're going to say, top two box is favorable. This, this really shouldn't say favorable, it should say, how many responded in the top two box?
Correct.
I mean, technically.
Correct.
And then, and then you look, you look under and you see what is the top two box response. Because I would argue, in fact, if you want to flip it, you know, for, for, for this first question, because if you want to see a teacher that often, it may be indicative of actually a very serious issue.
It may be negative and not often.
Well, to sit down and suggest that parents, that parents are engaged at a two percent level, first, just on the face, it seems absurd, but then when you look at the numbers, the numbers don't reflect that. Because if I sat there and said, I, every few months, I talk to, you know, one of my kids' teachers, that might be, in my mind, fully engaged, but that's not included in here.
Agreed. So two, I think there are two takeaways. One is, as Nick was mentioning, we need to do a deeper drill. As part of that, either with a PDF, we will have that lower level data, or as we did last year, maybe we make the link available to this. I think there's some hesitation on Panorama's side to make the link available, but if we go that route, we just need to extract out people, the response questions, like we did last year, because we don't want to reveal what's available to the general public because they, they have personal identifying information in that.
But also, to be in a spirit of continuous improvement, maybe we want to try to give Panorama some of this feedback, so that maybe their next iteration, some of these types that would call them discrepancies, but certainly, you know, where there's not clear or it looks like they sort of predetermined what their baseline is, we might want to try to influence that in a way that's going to be at least more amenable to what we're looking for.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we should, you got to, often, we do need to keep in mind that one of the reasons that we found, this is the first time we've ever got national benchmark data. Yes, consistency in the standardization is a big reason for...
I was like, clarification, if we're comparing apples to apples, high schools to high places, that would be fair.
Because I think that is, as we found this...
It's a good one.
Yeah.
Very good. Is it O six to twelve, or whatever?
Yeah, sure.
What I was, what I was surprised at, you know, as I was going through this, is that, and then I reviewed my notes from the last time, I, when we sent this thing out, is how little, how few of these questions referred to the administration. Most of this was the teachers in the classroom, the teachers and students in the classroom, the parents, how they felt about the teachers and the students in the classroom. But very little of this was having to the administration.
I think it's important to keep in mind, though, that this is founded on Panorama's research into what's important in schools. So they're looking at the big picture, they're looking at the whole picture. They call it the two-way street. They said, we want to see what happens in terms of how much family engagement, family support there is, as well as what the school's doing. So they're trying to get that full picture. I think that's something we have to keep in mind.
I guess I'm not understanding, but, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm trying to give you, I'm trying to give you the background to it. If you look at Panorama's scholars and who they're basing this on, a couple of people out of Harvard Graduate School of Education have been looking at family-school relationships for a number of years. And they've come up with a model, and that's where they get these sort of categories from, the school climate, school safety, running, there's about six other ones that they have available as well. And so we, me, myself, and Rick and Liz chose the categories that we wanted, and they have other categories, I think, six other ones that we could have chosen. So I think, you know, for the purposes of kind of getting a benchmark, this is what we're starting with, but that doesn't mean we couldn't add other categories, with Rick's point, you know, change question play, or they're open.
I will say, that's, I think, part of the reason they also have open response to that, where you're not covering things, folks can speak to those. I know Liz and I haven't, I, I also had an opportunity to look at the open response. I think we need to do a little more work to kind of code those, to give a better sense.
Can you provide color, though, on that?
Sure, I can provide a little color, this may be very limited to Liz, because we just got the information yesterday. The responses were very, very, I will say, I think, especially coming out of the last, so one thing was, you know, the quality of the survey, how did people speak to that? There were some responses, and actually, one of the very first ones was very colorful on that stuff, but overall, people didn't have very many comments on the survey. I think it's a very small percentage, so people didn't necessarily have an issue with the survey itself or the questions. Some people, one general issue that kept coming up was communication, and especially around uniforms. That was probably, I think, one of the most common topics. And then there were just a series of others, but there was, and I don't know if you saw any other really large trend, but I think that was probably the most significant trend.
Yep, no, I agree.
I tried to do a count on, on various things, and all the other ones seemed to be, if I were coding, would be smaller percentage, just that one really stood out. Communication, and particularly around the uniforms.
It's interesting you should mention that, because I went to the PTO meeting this past week, this past week, I was asked to come and talk about, did actually the family survey, and I gave them sort of a, some of a rationale for how Panorama puts this together and how it happened. They also had a question, they, the PTO had a question about the annual giving campaign, what that's used for, but very quickly, the questions turned to the uniform. And I was, we were kind of, it was kind of humorous, because I said, you know, we had a three-hour meeting about the uniform that, I think, sometime back in the winter, and it's interesting that it came back to the uniform again. So we had some discussion.
I don't understand, that was humorous?
No, it was, it was humorous because some of the people in the PTO that were there actually had been at the meeting beginning of February, and so when I said, you know, they had asked me to talk on three topics.
Right.
And so I talked on those, and then we quickly got to the uniform, I just mentioned earlier, it's, it's interesting that we're back at the uniform again.
Well, I think we're back at the uniform again, primarily because the website came out and the uniforms ended up being a lot more expensive than what people were expecting to, that's at least what I've been hearing, so.
I don't know, I got feedback about, I got some feedback about the uniform in terms of the cost versus the durability being compared, but I know we're looking at a possibility of having a maybe warm-up pant that would be at a lower price point, but we're trying to balance that with the quality as well and the durability. But we have responded to that concern.
For some reason, there's still a whole lot of energy behind the question.
Well, that's because people have to buy these.
Yeah, quite all.
That's the reason why, they have to buy new uniforms, and if you got one kid, that's one thing, but if you've got two or three kids, that's a lot of uniforms to have to buy.
Okay.
Yeah, that's really...
Antique was the most...
Well, or if you have seniors who don't have younger siblings, they're buying for one year, so.
Yes.
That's another...
So I may have some complaints about that, I know most of the ones, the most of the parents who've talked to me are sitting here going, you know, you know, at the, at the meeting, when we saw the uniforms, you know, there was a certain price that was, you know, you know, sort of an estimate on that price that was quoted out, and now it's, you know, essentially, well, it's much more than that. Some people said double, some people said triple. The point is, is that it's a lot more expensive than what they were expecting, and so...
And I would like to add that we're trying to respond to that concern by looking for a way to lower the price for maybe warm-up pants for PDE. I think it was a concern for PDE uniforms. And we've also been aware of the concern about the cost from the beginning, and so we had a opportunity to, I know with the first kind of comprehensive document we sent out, it didn't have a PDE finalized, we had everything else. It said that there would be a phase in opportunity where people would be able to use older uniforms as long as they match the color and the costume that they were looking for for next year. So there has been a kind of a, a kind of a, while moving toward something that resembles a uniform.
So this is not a meeting about uniforms, or off of that topic, in fact, if the school is in process with that, I don't communicate about it, when they're done with, I'm assuming that there will be clarifying, you know, something, so. I'm going to go back to...
Yeah, so I, just as a time check, we're about a minute over, so I think kind of as next step, that there'll be a deeper drill on this, sounds like, well, we collectively will look at getting more detailed information in PDF format for the general public, and I know Liz and I, we can talk about offline coding and trying to read back some of the parent comments so that...
Next meeting, yeah. Yeah, I mean, clearly, the school climate and the school state were concerned because they were a twentieth percentile compared to benchmark for those, so we just need to understand what some of these things mean. But yes, I would appreciate your digging into it and getting a little more. This was sort of the first submission. We're looking forward to sort of that in the next one.
Yeah, and I think if, the more that we can do, just per the conversation we just had here, to make it descriptive rather than, you know, like, this was positive, this was negative, that didn't get us very far with the first question, to say that, you know, the ones and twos nominated, and say what those are, because, you know, they really, I mean, we're saying positive and negative, but all that is, is counts of parent-teacher contacts.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's true. This is not...
So we're getting, we're getting kind of wrapped around the axle around, this is what's good versus what's bad, and we're really trying to figure out what is.
Yep.
So if there are specific topics, and as you review this data, if anyone has specific questions, I would invite you to send them to Liz and Rick, they'll look into it for us.
You know, I can also send out to the board members a little more information about how they put together the survey, what sort of intellectual rationale, for if you're interested in reading more into that. I mean, it's up to you, I guess.
I think that would be helpful.
Great. Okay, so moving on, I, I thought I'd notice to talk about certain complaints that have come in. So we have an ongoing complaint, which is still on hold, about enrollment, enrollment policy. We have received two complaints in the last month. One is on a, approved a formal complaint on an alleged civil rights violation for the school. And that complaint, given the nature of it, has been assigned to Allison and myself, actually. So that is just starting. We received another complaint, which is another rights violation complaint, which is just starting, so.
I know you're waiting for privacy, but can you give a little bit more detail about what you mean by civil rights violation or...
Um, probably not, because it's not that... One other piece of chair business before we get to the regional issues task force. All board members, this is the time of year that we have to fill out our financial disclosure forms and send them to the state and to all our, or the other places that we have to send them. You should have gotten an email, I know I got one last week from James Demeo, so if you've gotten those, you can do that all, okay, it's not even a pen, you have to, you have to do it online, you have to fill out that form online, let Sarah know when you've done that, because then she can download what you've done and send it to the other places that we also have to send it. So in the effort to streamline, it's actually now Twitter's one to work, you have to do it electronically and do it, send it to the other places.
Is this for the term that's coming up?
It is for the term that's ending, so you are, right, so actually, anyone who's taken... trustee, I believe, anytime during 2016, uh, 2015, right? So Roger, you also got one also.
Yeah, I've already filled out. So anybody who's a trustee, anytime during 2000, from January 1st to December 31st, 2015, has to fill the form out.
So you're gonna get one next year too? Yeah, because you'll get it for 2016.
For January.
Yeah, January, yeah, as well. That's actually usually what we have to go track down, this little form of trustees.
How come I have to do it when I start?
You do it when you start. People have to do it as soon as they start, just because that's required for approval. And then you have to do it every, every year, annually. All right, Ken, regional issue task force update?
So Liz and I have made a lot of progress this month, so, so we've had a number of discussions about sort of the path forward. One of the discussions that we had was around membership, and so, you know, so first off, the membership is of the task force, and I would distinguish that from who we are going to be seeking to get information from, which is obviously a much broader set of folks. So the fact that the, you know, the membership will be relatively narrow, you know, is not meant that we're only going to be getting input from that. So when Liz and I talked about it, we talked about asking for a representative from the administration, from the faculty, and from guidance, because we felt like guidance might have picked up on a lot of struggles that some of the students were going through. And we've sent that request to Dr. McCleary, and Dr. McCleary is reviewing that right now. So we're hoping to get representatives from each of the, you know, get an administration guidance and faculty. I would say it's two board members, Liz and myself, and then we also decided to reach out to parents. And so through our resources, we have reached out to parents and started getting responses in it, sort of looking at one parent from Maynard, Hudson, and Clinton, and then one from non-core town, and so, and we're getting responses from all four of those populations, so we should have selections fairly soon. We've also sent an initial data request to Dr. McCleary for some information around enrollments, population, regional bus service. You know, we'd ask for, you know, some information on after-school activity participation, which isn't tracked, but perhaps we can get some anecdotal information in that. But anyhow, we have submitted an initial data request to Dr. McCleary, and he's responded in part and has continued to gather information for that. Once Liz and I talk and sort of settle on the membership, then we're going to start taking a look at sort of a survey, how we might gather information from, from the various populations to, to sort of get perspectives on that. So as, as we've reached out to the communities, again, the, you know, Clinton, Hudson, Maynard, and, you know, beyond that, some people have said, hey, I can't be on the task force, but I got some perspectives I'd like to offer, and so of course we'll be able to get after that. So initially, there's some obvious issues that we would be taking a look at, regional bus service being one, after-school activities and participation in that would be another, and then sort of a more general one around activities that would help sort of build connections with, within the, the school community. And so, you know, example of this is, you know, when you come in that, you know, your kid's a sixth grader, you come in and they're taking the test together, the placement test together, and then later on, they get together for a pizza party and so forth. You know, again, for some of those kids that are there, they look around, they see familiar faces, because they've been going to school with these folks for a long time. In other instances, not, that's not so much. So how can we sort of capitalize on those initial activities in order to, you know, to build that? And then there's sort of the Wachusett climb, and, you know, there used to be nature's classroom, and there's, you know, field trips and so forth. Some field trips come at the end of the school year, how might we sort of, and the dances come at the end of the school year, how might we do some of those activities earlier on? So again, trying to nurture the relationships so that kids that are coming from farther field are feeling, feeling more connected with the community. So that's sort of where we are. Do you have anything to add to that? Yeah, so that's where we're at.
Super. All right. Next on the agenda is Candace. I don't want her to be reading this. Oh, yeah, there is. I think it's this one down here. Yep.
Lower.
Yep, that one.
Actually.
Is that a?
It's, there should be one, two. There should be two of them. It's going on. Sorry, top, top.
Hello. Thank you. Well, I thank you for having me again, and for all the support that I've gotten from probably everybody in this room, since I spoke to you last time. Our goal tonight is to raise some issues that we feel are important to the education of our children. As a public charter school, children with special needs have the right to be here. They deserve the opportunity to succeed in our rigorous curriculum. Yes, some of them think differently, they need accommodations, or they need to be taught different ways, but they're valuable members of our community, and they will thrive and supported. Next. So I wanted to start this picture to kind of frame special education for everybody. Students with special needs are not getting advantages over anybody. Equal on the left is when everyone is given the same. Equitable on the right is when people are given the opportunity to participate equally. And that's what the goal of special education is. So we have this concept, happens in our society on a regular basis. So golfers have handicaps, hospital nurses will triage and put people up and down depending on, you know, what their, what their needs are. So this concept is not unique to special education. And the laws are put in place to protect, to make sure that all children have equitable access to the curriculum. So what is a parent advisory council? There's several laws and regulations at the state level that apply to the parent advisory council. It can essentially be summarized by these five points. Membership is open to all parents of students that have a child with special education. It's open to anybody, actually, if that is interested. We are authorized to provide advice to districts regarding its special education programs and policies. We are, we are to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the district's special education programs. We develop real bylaws, we include rules for elections, and then school districts are required to help pack. So every district in the state has a PAC, and, and every district is compelled to assist the PAC in maintaining its operations and activities. And then there's, there's an intended financial component to this regulation. So not to say that you have to give the PAC thousands of dollars, but you're supposed to support what our needs are.
Can I ask a question, Candace? Just a language. I feel like I used to hear referred to a C-PAC. Does that change?
Um, so we recently changed ourselves to PAC. If you look at all of the laws within Massachusetts, they pretty much call it a PAC versus a C-PAC. They can be used interchangeably.
Okay, thank you.
Many PACs run workshops to attract people to their meetings, and while this is a commendable use of time and resources, it's actually not the purpose of the PAC. The purpose of the PAC is to advocate for children with special needs within the school district. So our job is not necessarily to educate parents, but it's to advocate for children. Before we continue on, I do want to make clear that the majority of frontline staff and teachers are really doing fantastic jobs. They care deeply about our children and work to the best of their abilities within any, within any constraint. So I'm not up here to try and, you know, lay a basket, everybody that, that worked at AMSA. I also don't want this to be an indictment against Ms. Pasternak. I liken her situation to being on the sinking ship with only a spoon, and she really needs a bucket. So just keep that in mind. I'm not trying to skewer anybody. And I do believe these challenges really do need to be addressed at an executive director level. As I mentioned in my last comments to you guys, I wanted to highlight kind of some of the differences between my experience in seeing PAC chair for the prior three years and my experiences this year. So previously, I was part of the Director of Student Services Selection Committee. I was part of the Executive Director Search Committee. The PACs voice was, was always hurt when it came to different processes. In this particular case, we weren't told about this massive kind of departure from the administration for an extended period of time. We were not consulting on kind of the new structure to how the special ed department's going to be run. We weren't consulting in the entire process of Ms. Pasternak. Previously, we had tremendous support from the, from the whole district, including financial presence at our meetings and open communication, where this year, we have been told will be no financial support. Only two out of 14 meetings that we had this year were attended by anybody in administration. And they had also, at one point, indicated that they wouldn't come to any meetings unless it was on a specific topic and there'd be no Q and A. Previously, we'd have a lot of input taken, or any input that was given was taken very seriously. And we are, this time, I feel like the input is invalidated and said, well, have each individual parent come talk to me. And the goal of us as a PAC is that we work as a unit, and it's not one person here, one person there. We're working together. So I think that that concept needs to be accepted. And then I can say, over the last three years, no one has ever, ever called me for help. No parent has ever called me for help. It was a very lonely job. This year, about 25% of my guests have contacted me for help on a regular basis.
Help meaning what?
Guidance, not guidance department. This, this just happened to my son. Is the, you know, corrective action discipline correct? I just, you know, I requested an IMP, or I requested a meeting, you know, two months ago, and I still haven't had the meeting yet, or I'm calling and nobody's calling back. You know, or it's maybe, you know, my child has accommodations and the teachers aren't providing the accommodations. So it's basically, you know, when you look at those boxes, right, so the boxes that are helping the, the short child, you know, be able to reach the apple, it's, it's those boxes. There's, there's a break somewhere in those boxes.
So do you quantify those responses or categorize them? Because it makes a difference. Exclusionary discipline is one thing, failure or call back is another thing.
I can do that for you, if you want. I can start to work with that together.
Combinations is a third thing.
And you'll see, actually, I'll get to kind of one of the last slides. I actually did put together a survey for all the special ed parents. So there's approximately 40 special ed children within AMSA. I think it was 26 of those parents responded to the survey. So about 65% responded to it. And there is a bunch of detail which may be.
Did you get that into their folders, the, the survey results, or is it just up there?
It's up.
Okay.
So we can pull it up if you want. In, in that, it has very, obviously, a lot of quantifiable data that you can look at. All right, one, we have, move on. So basically, I broke down the different concerns that we had into three different buckets: vision, programs, and process. Move on. So from a vision standpoint, if we look at the leadership, and I'm, and I'm not talking about the people specifically, the Director of Student Services and the Special Ed Coordinator. The entire structure of special ed department was changed. So previously, the Director of Student Services recorded directly to the executive director, was at the same level of the principal. It had a certain weight to the role and to his guidance. We are now, the Special Education Coordinator reports to the principal. So we have a difference in, I don't know, the strength of the role, the voice of the role. So that was, that's just a change in that structure. We also, I'm not going to necessarily read through each one of these, but we also have a concern about this consultant that is on board. Now, I think Ms. Houston is a wonderful person. Again, it's not a personal attack against Ms. Houston, but I do question, what is her role? Every time that we've pushed to say, why do you have a consultant, what is her role, what is her job description? We're not getting an answer. It's just, she's a consultant. And then there's, there's a perception, at least, that, that the parents have, that this consultant is needed, required for the school to properly fulfill its special ed obligations. So if she is required to fulfill our role of special ed, or to, to fulfill it properly, then it's almost like she's acting like a director of special education, but she's not the director of special education. And we are, we are, as parents, we are our recourse if something is, is going on. She's kind of like outside of what's happening within special ed. And I feel like we need to have somebody on staff that has her caliber of experience, but I think it needs to be part of our staff, not just an external consultant. And then one other area that is particularly concerning is, is kind of the approach. Previously, it was always, we almost started the two meetings, you know, okay, what do we need to do to help the child succeed? So just passing was never, not, not that it wasn't acceptable, but that was not the bar. It was, okay, what can we do so we can set them up to get an A, as opposed to what do we have to do so that he doesn't fail? So it's a very different mentality. And I feel like this year, we've kind of swung to that minimum. What's the minimum that we need to provide to this kid so that he doesn't fail? Any questions? All right, next. So programs. So there are a number of different words on here that you may or may not be familiar with. Social pragmatics, that's how people talk to each other. Reading specialists, appropriately licensed teachers. There are two particular ones that, that I, that I do want to raise. One is regarding transition planning. So transition planning is the method where the school, the parents, the child work together to develop a plan for what is the child going to do after high school? Are they going to go to college? Are they going to get a job? Are they going to live by themselves? And, you know, for the most part, the kids that come here do not have robust needs. Some of them are, you know, more than others. But the children still need to be able to, you know, are they gonna, do they need to drive a car? Do they need to learn proper study habits? You know, can they, I don't know, be responsible enough to do their laundry? So not all the stuff is required for the school to necessarily teach them, but the school, the, the parents and the child are supposed to work together to come up with a plan for how are we going to get this student ready to be independent and productive member of society. And this isn't necessarily new, because I would say that this has been a problem over the last several years as well. But I, I think that we need to do some, some programming, training, whatever you want to call it, very much transition planning. And then lastly, the one that I want to point out are the social emotional needs. And then lastly, the one that I want to point out are the social emotional needs. So over the last several years, schools have been making a concerted effort to address the emotional needs of all children, not just special ed. We had activity periods, we had speakers coming in and talking about, you know, bullying prevention, or stress management, or anxiety. And I haven't seen that going on, and my understanding is that the school is becoming completely pedantic focused and kind of not paying attention to these soft skills. And I think that that is short-sighted. The not addressing the social needs or the social emotional needs of children is really just going to increase our special ed needs, because as these children, as they're, as they're not able to manage some of these skills that they are lacking, it's going to end up in special education, because they're going to be in such a mental state that now we're going to have to start providing counseling services within the school system. We're going to have to, it, it's, you know, we're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul. So I think that that, that is an area that will affect all children, or affects all children, but particularly in the special needs area. And then process. So process, this is kind of where we kind of put in some of the compliance issues that we were talking about before. So timeframes, in the special ed law, there are required timeframes for certain activities to happen. They have to happen within those timeframes. There's no gray area. It's not like, oh, you have five days, but if you're up sick, sorry. You know, these things need to happen within a certain timeframe, and it keeps these different processes from going on forever and ever, and gets the children, and it gets to a point of where decisions get made, so that if the child needs help.
I think like, not really showing them what means a timeframe is what?
So if I submit a request to the school saying, I believe my child has, needs special education, I would like you to test my child. The school has five days to give me a consent form. Or say, no, we're not going to consent, you're going to go to BSA. BSEI. Then from that point, as soon as that document is transmitted, you have 45 days to do your testing and convene a team meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You know, so there's, there's these different timeframes that, that must be followed. And we've had a lot of challenges with that this year. Goals and benchmarks are tools that we use to determine if a child is making effective progress. So this is like any report you write for your business, what are my sales targets? Am I meeting them? Do I need to adjust? So that same concept is built within the IP process. And this year, there's been some challenges with getting measurements on our progress reports. So subjective words, like so-and-so is doing really well. So-and-so is very happy. That, that's not a measurement. You can't judge if somebody's making progress or not making progress, or doing the right things or the wrong things.
So were there tools being used in prior years that are not being used now?
Um, I wouldn't say they're necessarily tools, but when you, when you write your IPs, you say, you know, for example, Ryan will, during conversation, Ryan will have three exchanges before he changes the topic. Right? So that's, he's, he's learning how to make conversation. So if you're just saying, Ryan is communicating really well.
Got it. Thank you.
What's he doing? So it, it's all in the wording. How, how things go.
I got it, I got it.
Well, it's in the wording, it's also in the mindset in terms of how, you know, if you're taking a look, if there is certain intervention, is that intervention being successful, or it's not being successful? Are you ready to move on to another?
Right, different strategy.
Right, another strategy. Thank you.
Exactly. So then communication. Previously, and I don't know, Liz, why don't you tell me if this is so true? I know when we first started here, the special ed liaisons would have grade level meetings for every student that was on the IP. I believe it was every three weeks. So every three weeks, special ed liaison would get together with the teachers, say, hey, everything going okay with Ryan? Anything I need to know about? And then that would get reported back to the parents. So there would be a lot of proactive communication to the parents, letting us know what is going on, the good, the bad, the ugly. This year, that type of proactive communication doesn't happen, doesn't happen on a regular basis.
And in my.